Mr. Schaefer, can you hear me?
Yeah. We hear you.
Mr. Conley, are you with us? There you go.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry about the late arrival. I thought I had a few more moments.
Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. Mr. Nixon?
All right, I suppose. My computer won't zoom, so I'm good.
Can everyone hear us in the council room?
Yes.
Yes.
Not zoomed, so that's fine. I don't need to. It just clogs up the bandwidth.
Yeah, just make sure you talk into the mics when we're in the room, otherwise they won't be able to hear you at home.
See Mr. Hoag.
Well, let's go ahead and get started. Seven o'clock, I call the meeting to order. If you would please rise and recite the pledge with me. All right, we have a couple of oaths of office to issue. I have Daniel McGrath, John Nixon, and Clint Conley. So since you're all on Zoom, I'll just have you raise your right hand. I'll read the oath. I'll do all three of you at one time, and then I'll mail you your oath to sign and return back to me. I, Daniel McGrath, John Nixon, and Clint Conley, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the city charter and code of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of planning commission members to the best of my abilities. Say I do or I will.
I will.
I do.
Thank you. All right, I will now open the floor for nominations for chairperson. Are there any nominations?
I clap.
Mr. Nixon, did you nominate Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Yes, okay, and Mr. Hall seconded? Are there any other nominations? I will call the roll call vote for Mr. Conley for chairperson. Mr. Hall?
Yeah.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yeah.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Conley. I will issue your oath as well. I, Clint Conley, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the city charter and code of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of planning commission chairperson to the best of my abilities.
I will.
Thank you, and I will turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, it looks like the next item on the agenda is we need to open the floor for nominations for the vice chair. So do I have a nomination for the vice chair?
I'll nominate John Nixon.
I'll nominate Mr. McGrath.
Are there any other nominations? So do we take these in order then, Ms. Johnson? Sorry. I couldn't. I couldn't hear what she said. I'm assuming that we're going to then go in the order that they were presented. Oh, that would be Mr. Nixon first. All in favor, Mr. Nixon? Actually, you do do this as a roll call, don't wait. And Ms. Johnson, stop me anywhere along the way if I'm doing this improperly. So, Mr. Hall? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. I'm not getting anything here. I'm not sure if anyone else, if his mic is turned off or...
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I heard that one. Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Hoag?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
It appears that Mr. Nixon has been, has passed. I'm not sure of the correct term here, but it appears that Mr. Nixon, the vote, the motion has been approved for Mr. Nixon. So I guess you're now the vice chair, and you lost the game of chicken. So, I'm assuming Ms. Johnson will handle the oath of office?
All right, if you would please raise your hand, John. I, John Nixon, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the city charter and code of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of planning vice chairperson to the best of my abilities.
I will.
Okay. Um, do we still need to do a roll call for attendance since we already just did roll calls for the vote? If I don't hear otherwise, okay, I'm just going to do it. So, we'll do the roll call, so Mr. Conley is here, Mr. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Hamel?
Present.
Mr. Hoag?
Present.
Mr. McGrath?
Here.
And Mr. Nixon?
Here.
Okay, today, I can't see on my particular view who is in the chamber other than those that are at the dais or up at the desk. So, is the planning official here, is Mr. Johnson there this evening?
No.
So I've been working, trying to get him online. He is currently connecting to audio, but he's been hanging that way for a couple of minutes. So, we're working on it, and of course, I can go through the agenda if he's not able to connect.
Okay, so that was the place in the agenda where I'm supposed to represent the planning officials. So Mr. Johnson is attempting to connect, and we'll move on then. The next thing we need to do is we need a motion to approve the minutes. So, has everyone had the opportunity to look over the minutes from the last meeting? We had a special meeting on December 29th. We need to approve those or make amendments if necessary.
A motion to approve?
For?
I do have an amendment.
Okay.
For my name, it's H A M E L. Throughout, when I mentioned in the minutes, it's M M E L.
Are there any other amendments that are necessary for the minutes? Okay, do we need to adjust? Was that Mr. McGrath's motion?
I'll amend my motion to include the adjustments.
Second.
All in favor of the motion as amended, or the agenda? All of, sorry, all in favor of the minutes as amended? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Moving on. We have tonight's agenda to approve. Hopefully you've had the opportunity to look over the agenda. It's page one in your packet. Are there any? Well, actually, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve?
I'll second that if no one else will. Do we have, is the agenda satisfactory for everyone before we move on?
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Sorry, my apologies. So I would comment just one thing. I'm trying to work with Mr. Johnson on the telephone while we're going through this. And that is, somebody pointed out to me that item eight C, the marijuana establishments and facilities amendment, ordinance amendment. It was listed as a scheduled public hearing, but I failed to actually put it into the agenda. So we have a couple of options at this point, depending on how the board wishes to proceed. Of course, all the board members have seen this ordinance in the past. I've emailed it to you guys. You guys should be fairly familiar with it, and if not, it's a very basic discussion. So we could add that agenda item to discuss if you would like. Or, in the alternative, we could simply hold the hearing today, table it until the next meeting, hold a second public hearing at the next meeting, and discuss it at that meeting instead. So those are some of your options, however we'd like to proceed.
So, so that I can understand correctly, it is in the agenda under public hearings, but it's not in the agenda to do anything under new business? Is that what you're?
Correct. That was just a mistake on my behalf. It was not intentional. So, probably the smart thing to do from a public hearing perspective is to hold two public hearings. The only question I have, I guess, is do we want to discuss this item today, or do we just want to table it until next meeting?
Okay. I'm sorry?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Why don't we just remove it?
Tim, I can hear you.
Remove it from the agenda until next month.
Is, would that be the appropriate course action, Mr. Womack, with the public hearing scheduled?
Just as a note, Mr. Conley, the public hearing deadline for the February meeting for Planning Commission was yesterday.
Well, Mrs. Johnson, technically, for notice purposes, you're correct that to notice it as a public hearing, we would have to have done it yesterday. But I think we could proceed, because we're only required to do one public hearing, which we could accomplish tonight. It's probably best formed to do it, public notice, but I don't think it's legally required. But this is going to be an ongoing issue moving forward. I don't think we're going to finish this up in the next meeting or the next two meetings anyways. So maybe we continue to hold public hearings straight through March, if that's the next available hearing date.
I would, I personally would, wouldn't mind keeping it in there. And if the public wants to speak to it, this is an opportunity to speak to it. It sounds like it may not be their last opportunity to speak to it. And if they don't, they won't, and then we'll move on and reschedule as is appropriate and necessary. So, so, we have a motion on the floor to amend the agenda, correct? I'm sorry, to accept the agenda. So, um, is there any other discussion on the agenda?
I'm sorry, I had everybody unmuted. Did I miss anything?
I was asking if there's any other discussion on the agenda item before we vote on the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, thank you.
If not, I believe the motion was to approve the agenda. So, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda? Please say if you are with aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Moving on, sure I'm in the right place here? It is now the time for public comments. If anyone would like to comment on anything that's before the planning commission tonight, or anything that's not necessarily before the planning commission. If you are interested, I will remind you of a couple of things.
We have, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. It was someone...
We have three in person at City Hall.
Okay. If someone is interested in doing public comments, I will tell you that there are also some scheduled public hearings today, which is another opportunity. If you were interested in speaking towards those, you will have an opportunity there as well. But this is your opportunity, if you just have any general comments, before we move on tonight.
All right, am I, am I all right to speak now?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, Planning Commission. I am Sharon Magoon of eighty East Maple Street, Cedar Springs, Michigan. I just had a couple of questions. One was, one is what motivated you to choose the decision to allow marijuana to be a good choice for Cedar Springs? And the second one, have any of you plans to use marijuana yourselves? I figure it must not be a shameful substance if you are promoting it for Cedar Springs residents by your votes for its admittance. And then, you know, just a cut, you know, that you think about, because I don't want to, you know, I'm not going to use up time. But lastly, I state publicly here that I will not be a customer or a user of marijuana, and I disapprove of it for our town. I feel that to cherish our history, as our town's motto does state, will not be possible in many instances in the lives of children and families that will suffer under marijuana's negative influence. May the decisions you make for us, your local citizens, promote the future, a future worth embracing. We are to cherish our heritage and embrace our future. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mrs. Johnson, is there anybody else in the council room who would like to make comments at this time?
Yes, this is Rose Powell, Cedar Springs, Michigan. I have, I am a member of Women's Club, and we are the chairpeople of the Versity Blood Drive on Tuesday at the Methodist Church from noon to seven o'clock. And if you are able to give blood or spread the word, we sure would appreciate it. And also, if you never knew whether you had COVID or not, you will get an antibody test. Your blood will be tested to see if it can be used, plasma to help the people that are sick. And I can tell you, this happened to my other daughter. She had just given blood and found out that she had had COVID and had no idea. So, you know, it's a good thing to know, that convalescent plasma is very important at this time. So if you want to schedule, go online to Versity Blood Drive, and that's very easy to set up an appointment. You have a variety of times. There's a little health questionnaire, questionnaire. And if you go and give blood, you get a little prize and some cookies. So there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Johnson, is there anybody else in the council chamber who'd like to make a comment at this time?
Hello, I'm Brenna Datt Powell. I have a building on twenty-one East Maple Street in Cedar Springs. I am also on the zoning board of appeals for sole and township. So I do participate in my government. I want to thank all the new people on this board really stepping up. We needed you here, especially at this time of the growth of this community. Not only the businesses, but also the condos coming into town and our growing school system. I do, I do and would like to speak on each of the, each of the matters in the hearings. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Johnson, is there anybody else in the council chamber who'd like to speak at this time?
No, there is nobody else here in the council room.
Thank you. Mr. Conley, since I have the list here, would you like me just to run through everybody who's on the computer and ask for public comment?
Yes, I did see one gentleman with, under the name Mike, raised his hands. I'm not sure if that indicated that that was an indication he wanted to comment. Appears it is.
Well, so Mr. Conley, there's two options, I guess. I could either run through each person and ask them for public comment, or we could simply ask people to raise their hands and even call in them. Part of the problem with that is there's a number of people here who are not visible. They just have their names available. I guess that's however you'd like to do it.
I will leave it up, I will, if you would like to run through the names, I have no preference one way or the other. Just wanted to make sure that this gentleman had his opportunity.
Sure, okay, so we can go through this pretty quickly. There's not that many people. I have a Craig Wilson. Would Craig Wilson like to make a public comment?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, perfect. I guess I don't understand, are we already approving eight different marijuana facilities and looking at more? Why would Cedar Springs possibly need that many, whatever you want to call them, marijuana stores? This is just not a good public image, I would not think. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a Bryce Boser, would Bryce like to make a public comment?
Not at this time. I'm here to, just to watch.
Thank you. Let's see here, I have Craig Wilson. Would Craig Wilson like to make a public comment? Sorry, the name's been moving on me.
Okay, yeah, I just did. Thank you.
Sorry. I have Emily Elms. Would like, would Ms. Elms like to make a public comment?
No, thank you.
I have Frank Bowenzi. Would Frank Bowenzi like to make a public comment? I have Gavin Chutton. Would Gavin Chutton like to make a public comment?
Yes, if this is the appropriate time. I don't think the height ordinance request from Display Pack is on the agenda, but being proposed for a future agenda, is that correct, Mr. Womack?
Well, so just to clarify, there is no ordinance for any particular business. There is an ordinance that's being reviewed, but it's not for Display Pack or anybody else.
Correct. Yeah, if I can...
Item C under new business.
I can just say a few things about how that could potentially affect, at least, the industrial development district that Display Pack is currently in, and how it impacts Display Pack in particular. One thing we're looking at doing is vertically integrating our company into a process called extrusion, where we'll start extruding our own plastic PET film. As part of that, it involves buying a large amount of plastic resin pellets. And the way that companies store those pellets are in silos. It's a very large, expensive investment to make, and I believe right now, there's an ordinance in place that would restrict the height of the silos that we would be allowed to install at this point, which makes it much more expensive, potentially to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars. I really understand the need for a height restriction ordinance. However, given the unique location of our business, it seems like a necessary restriction that certainly will inhibit our ability to continue to grow as effectively as we could as if we're allowed to have silos that are taller than the current ordinance in order to allow us to efficiently move forward, vertically integrating our business into this new process.
Thank you.
Okay, so I apologize. Names keep moving around on me, so I may accidentally call you once or twice. So, let's see here, Justin Sorensen, have I asked you for a public comment yet?
No comment needed right now. Thank you.
How about Lisa Corbet? Lisa Corbett? Please, would you give a public comment?
No comment at this time, thank you.
I have a Mike. Mike is not me, so Mike, do you have a public comment?
Yes, I just wanted to thank everybody that is getting involved in the planning commission. I know that it's a lot of work. There's a lot that goes into it. A lot of your personal time is taken by that. And I just wanted to thank the new members of the planning commission for stepping forward and doing so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's all the names I identified. Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment who has not been called at this time?
Okay. Hearing no one, we'll move on. The, the next thing on the agenda is this is the opportunity for members of the planning commission to declare if they've had, have any conflicts of interest, or have had any ex parte communication with anyone involved with business that's before us tonight.
Mr. Conley, I apologize. I have a public comment here.
I'm sorry?
Sent to me by Ms. Kathy Bremer. So, I will keep and ask everybody to keep in mind, these are not my comments. These are comments that were sent to me via email that I'm reading out loud. Planning Commission numbers. Times change, people change, towns and cities change, but the one thing that does not change is a resident's need for safe neighborhoods. The recent influx of marijuana business applications and all but certain approvals is certainly going to change the character of Cedar Springs. Any business that has to have such stringent security is certain to bring risks just by the very nature of the business. Cash-only transactions alone has already brought criminal elements to other such business in our area. Statistics show increased property crimes in neighborhoods surrounding marijuana businesses, and that is something our city doesn't need. Statistics show increased property crimes in neighborhoods surrounding marijuana businesses, and that is something our city doesn't need. With marijuana so easily accessible, you have only to speak with social workers and teachers in our school system to understand that children get access to the drugs in their homes. The results are students who are not at their best in not learning as they should, not to speak of behavioral issues that make learning and teaching difficult. Our city's master plan's vision is for a quaint small-town character. Multiple marijuana businesses that you allow to fill buildings on Main Street and our business areas will do nothing to protect that vision. We have lost a frame shop and restaurant that had been supported by the community for decades. And now the Chinese restaurant is being pushed out of its location. The owners of marijuana businesses will make millions and will likely contribute back a fraction. But the long-term negative repercussions to our city's reputation and to its residents' well-being will not be worth the risks taken to revitalize the downtown by flooding it with marijuana. To date, there are six applications awaiting approval. That would be a travesty of common sense, to say the least. Our population is approximately thirty-seven hundred, which has increased since the 2010 census. Families wanted to move here. Ask yourself if they would want to do with the downtown filled with people coming here from surrounding areas to buy their marijuana. Would you want to live with the traffic that will increase, the lack of parking downtown, which is already a problem? I respectfully ask that you seriously consider how much is too much in the town of our size. I realize it was the council that was over hasty in their vote to allow unlimited licenses. Now you stand as the last hope residents have to stop that flood, which will absolutely change the character of our city. I would add that the Zoom meetings are keeping many from voicing their objections. Without being able to speak to you in person, people simply are not comfortable using the internet or phone to express their opinions. It's time to open up in-person meetings. You can decide to do that. Thank you, Catherine Bremer. Thank you.
Okay, with that addition on there, I go back to the conflicts of interest or ex parte communication. This is your opportunity, council members, or I'm sorry, not council members, planning commission members, if you have anything to declare. Hearing none, we will move on to the scheduled public hearings for tonight. The first one, this is Agenda Item 8A. This is regarding a special land use of Kaisu retailers LLC DBA. And forgive me if I pronounce this incorrectly, it's K-kind or kind with two K's at 206 and 218 North Main Street for a recreational adult-use marijuana retail store. If you have any comment on this, this is your opportunity specifically for this item. And you can take that now. I'm sorry, Mr. Womack, if you're talking.
Yep, I guess I'll go through the list again. Craig Wilson, do you have a public comment?
Um, I think I've already made the comment. I just, I definitely oppose it. Our city does not need to have multiple stores. Thank you.
Bryce Boser debt, do you have a public comment? Emily Elms, do you have a public comment?
No, thank you.
Frank Bowenzi, do you have a public comment? Gavin Chuton, do you have a public comment?
No, thank you.
Jeff Haverston, do you have a public comment?
No, thank you.
Justin Sorensen, does Justin Sorensen have a public comment?
No, thank you.
Lisa Corbett, does Lisa Corbett have a public comment?
No, thank you.
Does Mike? Mike, do you have a public comment?
I'm in support of the new business.
Race Re, does Race Re have a public comment?
Not at this time.
Ron Schaefer, does Ron Schaefer have a public comment?
This time.
And I guess, Ms. Johnson, does anybody in the council chamber have a public comment?
Mr. Wilson's mic is open.
Hello, Brenna Dot Powell again, speaking on the A of special hearings. To the fact that these businesses coming to town is bringing more security than anything you could bring into town. We're talking outdoor cameras, we're talking close close security in these buildings. You're gonna see video of Main Street. Less people smashing pumpkins on Halloween. I, I'm all for this Kaisu retailers. I am part of this sale. And thank you for your time again.
Ms. Johnson, anybody else from the council chamber?
Nobody else at this time.
Ms. Johnson, would it be easier if I just asked Mr. Hall in the future?
That'd be fine.
Thank you. Mr. Conley, it sounds like we've got everybody unless there's anybody else who'd like to make a public comment at this time.
Okay.
I would like to mention that I am in support of this business as well. Thank you.
I'm sorry, was that Lisa Corbett?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no more public comment, I will close the public hearing on, on this particular issue. And we will move on to the next public hearing on our schedule tonight. The next one is 8B on the agenda. This is a special land use of Healing Organic Garden. I'm sorry, Healing Organic Garden LLC DBA White Pine Provisionary at 4116 Seventeen Mile Road for a recreational adult-use marijuana retail store and a recreational adult-use marijuana Class C grower. This is your opportunity to speak to this if you have any opinion or comments.
So I'll start with Justin Sorensen. Mr. Sorensen, do you have a public comment at this time?
Um, is this where I present a narrative, Mike?
So, Mr. Conley, it sounds like Mr. Sorensen is part of this group. Would you like to hear from them now? Or would you like to hear from them during the discussion of the, their business?
We customarily give the applicant an opportunity to speak in the, if they're on the agenda and that we will, we'll be asking you questions at the time. But at the same time, I'm not going to restrict your right to, to make a comment if you choose to, but you will have an opportunity to speak later.
Okay, I'll speak later. Thank you.
Bryce Boser debt, would Bryce like to make a public comment at this time? Craig Wilson, would Mr. Wilson like to make a public comment at this time? Emily Elms, would you like to make a public comment at this time?
I am the applicant and I'll speak when we speak about our application.
Thank you. Frank Bowenzi, would Frank Bowenzi like to make a public comment at this time? Gavin Chuton, would Gavin Chuton like to make a public comment at this time?
Thank you.
Jeff Haverston, would Jeff Haverston like to make a public comment?
No, thank you.
Let's see here. Lisa Corbett, would you like to make a couple of comments about this one at this time?
Not at this time, thank you.
And Mike, would Mike like to make a public comment at this time?
Uh, no, thank you.
Patrice Bowenzi, would Patrice Bowenzi like to make a public comment?
No, not at this time.
Race Re, would Race Re like to make a public comment at this time?
Not at this time.
And would Ron Schaefer like to make a public comment?
Not at this time.
That's all I got unless there's anybody else. I failed to call.
Okay.
We have one here in the chamber.
Thank you.
Brenna Dot Powell again. I'm all for these businesses coming to town and updating our buildings. I personally have a building downtown also. Now, there is one hard and fast rule in regards to marijuana, and it is to not be next to a single-family residence. That is the biggest stickler on this building. There is a single-family residence that lines two borders of this property. The, let me see here, and those are 100% homesteaded property around this mall. Again, security, let's see here. Oh, that's, that is all I had on this, this public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the council chambers that would like to comment?
No.
Thank you. With that, I'll close this public hearing. And we will move on to the next public hearing. This will be Item 8C. An ordinance to amend Chapter 40, Article 1, Section 40-6, entitled Definitions N through Z. Chapter 40, Article 4, Section 4468, entitled Marijuana Establishments and Facilities. Chapter 40, Article 8, Section 4575, Paragraph G, entitled Marijuana Establishments of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Cedar Springs. If you have any public comments on this particular issue, this is your opportunity to do so.
And for those who are not aware, this is a proposed ordinance amendment that would include a 100-foot separation distance between all marijuana businesses. So with that being said, Bryce Boser debt, would Bryce like to make a public comment? Emily Elms, would you like to make a public comment?
No, thank you.
Frank Bowenzi, would Frank like to make a public comment? Gavin Chuton, would Gavin like to make a public comment?
Oh, thank you.
Jeff Haverston, would Jeff like to make a public comment?
No, not at this time.
Justin Sorensen, would Justin like to make a public comment?
No, thank you.
Lisa Corbett, would Lisa Corbett like to make a public comment?
No, thank you.
Mike, would Mike like to make a public comment?
No, thank you.
Ron Schaefer, would Ron Schaefer like to make a public comment?
Not at this time.
And I believe that's all I have. Oh, Race Re, would Race Re like to make a public comment?
No, thank you.
I guess, anyone in the council chamber? Mr. Hall?
Mrs. Powell, yes.
First, I have to ask, did we skip B? That was the Healing Gardens, okay. All right. This is a public hearing, and as I read the agenda, there were a couple of things that were missing. One was the ordinance that we're supposed to discuss. So that was unavailable to the public. The other thing that concerned me was the map of the area that the first primary 100-foot area or setback area would cover, which has to be loom downtown by the theater. So everything after that is eliminated from opening any kind of a marijuana business. So I feel that this public hearing is not a public hearing. I know you folks on the planning commission have heard it and seen it and done it, but the public hasn't. So that's my objection. Whether I object to the ordinance amendment or I support the ordinance amendment, I've been over it 100 times. But maybe the public should, has the right to see all this and understand what it means to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't, we don't normally address comments during, during these things, but I, I would like to clarify that we had made the decision earlier tonight when there was the issue with the agenda that we, in, under the abundance of caution, we were holding a public hearing tonight and that we may have to hold another public hearing later. So this was intended to be an additional opportunity for the public to speak, perhaps not the only opportunity for the public to speak. Are there any other comments?
Brenna Dot Powell. It took about two years for this marijuana ordinance to come to this town. Several meetings, several inputs, lots of meetings. I do, I would like the new people on this planning commission to be able to read this new amendment to the zoning ordinance. This ordinance is not really affecting a lot of buildings in this town. Yes, we should have a map and it should be looked over more than just once. The amendment of 100-foot is knocking out certain buildings that was the idea of unlimited marijuana businesses in this town. Our town needed a facelift. We thought marijuana coming into this town would bring a facelift to this town. The beautiful buildings that are going to be put on our Main Street and the heightened security will bring some better-looking buildings to this town. 100-foot setback is gonna affect certain buildings in this town that need that, that facelift. I would like it, this map of the 100-foot setback to be on the amendment to show the new planning commission, planning commissioners what buildings are really going to be setback. This should, this 100-foot setback should have started from the beginning or limited licenses on this ordinance. Now, we're going, we're backtracking, so that is actually making it so the people that have put their licenses in early have got the upper hand on this town. Thank you.
Mr. Hall, is there anybody else in the council chamber who'd like to make a public comment?
Not at this time, I think.
And with that, we'll close the, this public hearing. And we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is an item, an old business under 9A. There was a motion to recommend the approval or denial to the city council for the amendment of ordinance, Chapter 40, Article 3, Division 13, Section 4409, entitled Commercial and Industrial Side and Rear Setback Reductions of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Cedar Springs. Now, Mr. Womack, when we tabled this last time that we saw this, if I'm correct, because we were waiting for input from Mr. Johnson on that, is that true?
Yep. So I believe this was on your agenda on the 29th. So I appreciate you guys looking in at that time. Obviously, the end of December is a difficult time to get some of these more complex things completed. I was really desperately hoping that we'd have Mr. Johnson available tonight to speak about this. But I think maybe the best course of action right now would be to have me confer with him on the phone tomorrow. I'm sure he's had the opportunity to review this ordinance. And so that me and him can talk about maybe some changes that might be appropriate. But I guess this would be an appropriate time for any members of the planning commission who might have any thoughts about it on how it might affect the district and whether they think it's a good idea to move forward on. But at this time, I think I would recommend tabling it to the next meeting.
So what's the opinion of the planning commission? Do you have any questions or comments? Or a motion, one way or the other, on how we should proceed on this?
A motion to table pending further information and insight from Mr. Johnson.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of tabling this, this business until the opportunity to receive more information on it, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion is carried, so we're tabling it. Moving on to uh, new business. The first business, the first item on our agenda, new business tonight is the, and again, correct me when I have the opportunity to hear from you, uh, K Kind or Kind Recreational Adult Use Marijuana Retail Store at two oh six and two eighteen North Main Street. Um, if we can't hear from Mr. Johnson tonight, can you, uh, Mr. Womack, help us understand what's happening with this particular piece of business?
Yeah, I, I can certainly try, and not as uh, pretty or well spoken as Mr. Johnson, but I'll do my best. Uh, maybe we're in the better place to ask any members uh, who are present on behalf of this uh, business to present their vision and their ideas um, and their thoughts, and then I can walk through the city planner's report. Um, you know, that they, I, I read the reports.
Hello.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson is here.
Okay, Mr. Johnson is here. Okay, so Mr. Johnson can walk through the report, but uh, I guess, Mr. Conley, you have to decide whether you want to hear from Mr. Johnson first, or if you want to hear from the uh, applicant first.
I um, don't have an opinion one way or the other. If Mr. Johnson is, is ready to give us a synopsis of the, the city's position, I'm happy to hear that, and then we can, we can get a response from the applicant. Um, I'm fine with that.
Sure, I can start.
Okay.
This is for, this is for the uh, K Zoo retailers, that's the right report?
Yes.
Okay. Apologize for uh, coming in late. Uh, my computer skills aren't as uh, aren't as good as my planning and zoning skills. So if you have my report, I'm gonna start on page two, and I'll try to be uh, to summarize this for you.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, uh, for the planning commission, if you're looking at the packet, uh, I believe that's page sixty-two in our packet is where the city planner's report begins.
Thank you. Okay, in my report, I go over the uh, compliance with the uh, ordinance requirements, and my first comment has to do with the, the site plan. Item two in my report addresses the uh, fence that would be along Main Street and Pine Street. Uh, Pine Street, uh, I believe is a public, city public street, and I know Mr. Womack uh, thought that might be uh, designated as something else, but it appears it is a public street, and if so, then uh, setbacks have to be taken from the front lot line along that public street. So there is a six foot fence within the front lot line along Pine Street, and my report asks if the commission should uh, require that that uh, six foot fence be removed, rather they have the opportunity to do that. So that may be something you want to discuss uh, as a commission. Uh, moving on to parking, uh, space number one is within ten foot setback from North Main Street and needs to be moved. There are five parking spaces on Pine Street. Again, assuming that's a public street, they are located within the ten feet setback uh, is also would need to be removed. The ordinance would require eighteen parking spaces on site. Uh, they need to show that as well as employee parking. And then in their narrative, in their area impact statement, they stated they had eight to sixteen customers per hour would be anticipated, and in their special use response, they stated that only five to six customers per hour would be expected, so the applicant should clear up that discrepancy. If they are paving the parking lot, our ordinance requires a six foot, six inch raised or rolled concrete curb around the parking lot. And also, I'd like them to label the uh, the sidewalk next to the building. It should be seven feet wide to allow for a two foot overhang uh, for parked vehicles. And moving on to the next page of my report, we're looking for some landscaping along the east lot line and also in the front along Main Street. Uh, underground irrigation uh, is required by the ordinance. The planning commission should decide if that, decide if that should be waived or not. Uh, lighting requirements from the ordinance need to be shown as well as the uh, dumpster requirements. And they show a dumpster on the Pine Street side. If that is considered the front yard, uh, dumpsters cannot be located in the front yard. They must only be in the rear yard. Uh, building facade requirements. Uh, I provided a number of different references to the zoning ordinance, but in my opinion, the facade would appear to meet the ordinance's requirements. And then um, the next page of my report, there are a number of items missing on the site plan, and they'll need to provide that. And then the major, the rest of my report talks about how they meet the uh, ordinance submitted requirements for floor plans, security plans, uh, marijuana delivery, outreach, ADA plan, waste disposal plan, and odor elimination and blight elimination. All those things are fleshed out in my report, which the applicant can read and then provide that information. Uh, customer plan does meet our ordinance, and then I provided a brief analysis of the special land use permit requirements. Generally, the use likely meets those standards, but there are too many outstanding issues with the site plan that I believe that the planning commission should uh, table this decision until a revised site plan is submitted and to address any other issues that the planning commission may have. So with that, I would uh, conclude my report and ask the commission if they have any questions for me.
Members of the commission, do you have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay, well, we might call, we might call you later, Mr. Johnson, as things come up, but thank you for that. Um, would anyone like to speak uh, for the applicant or the applicant themselves, or do you like to speak on this uh, issue tonight and, and let us know um, what you're thinking?
Mr. Conley, while they're thinking about it, maybe I could address a few issues that I've noticed myself?
Certainly.
Okay. So uh, as Mr. Johnson indicated, um, what is marked on certain maps as Pine Street, um, the city generally regards as the driveway to North Park. So I'm not entirely sure that a front setback would be required along that side of the building. However, I also don't know if we want to have customers parking on the south side of the building. Uh, first of all, because there's not enough room for nose in parking there. Uh, it's really only big enough for parallel parking. Uh, and on top of that, if it were to become uh, uh, public parking, it would need to be paved over. So if the board's gonna consider allowing parking there, it should be considered employee parking only. Um, I, I did note that there is sparse details related to landscaping and lighting. Now, those things are, they're kind of tough to get through, so of course, I have no problems with the planning commission approving that, subject to uh, review and approval by the zoning administrator. Um, as Mr. Johnson indicated, there are not enough parking spots uh, indicated on the site plan. Uh, and I think probably the biggest mistake or error is that there was no uh, stormwater clogs provided. Uh, so we would need the city engineer's approval uh, after review of those calculations provided to help. Um, so you know, that stuff is all pretty straightforward. Um, I, I, I would like to hear from the planning commission their thoughts on the facade that was provided and whether that meets with your expectations. And uh, I guess the parking situation.
So uh, is there anyone available uh, at this point from the uh, from the, the uh, the K Zoo, or if I pronounce that properly, um, that would like to speak on that?
Uh, yes, Mr. Conley, this is Ron Schaefer with uh, K Zoo Retailers, uh, K Kind. And uh, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing us to uh, apply to the city of uh, Cedar Springs and, and I have some responses to Mr. Johnson's plan, uh, which we have uh, made a lot of corrections, but I will go through those uh, line by line as he had to reassure you that they have been addressed. Uh, we might have jumped the gun a little quick, and we tried to make those revisions and present them. And uh, Mr. Johnson does have an electric co- copy of those changes as requested. Uh, we are uh, submitting to him. They actually printed material also. Uh, but in reference to the uh, parking A, uh, the first space that was uh, less than ten feet from the sidewalk has been corrected. Uh, five spots along uh, Pine Street, which is item B, have been uh, because the question was, is, it's not a real convenient spot for uh, customers to park. So we've moved all the parking over to the uh, to the lot, to the east of the building. Uh, in regards to the uh, the eighteen spaces, those corrections have been made on the new prints also. There was an error in the area impact of, of s- eight to sixteen customers per hour. That should re- be five to six customers, which to our calculations, I think should be uh, the fifteen spaces that, as noted. Uh, on section D, uh, yes, we uh, have created a wider sidewalk to allow for that overhang from the building to the parking spaces along the building. Uh, landscaping has been corrected. The, we were u- initially using a landscape plan that had been submitted by the, the current owner, and we understand that that's not in compliance any longer. So we have noted on the planned revision, the addition of the uh, eight trees and sixteen shrubs along the east side of the, of the property line where uh, the brush had been removed and created a clear sightline, so we've added the, the plantings there and designated them on the plans to, to the species and what they are. Uh, we've also done the same with the uh, the west elevation along Main Street. Uh, again, to uh, requirement of six trees and twelve shrubs uh, to match those and, and the other landscaped areas of. Uh, the only thing that we have not looked at and, and just from the feasibility of all the paving and, and uh, sidewalks is the requirement of irrigation. Uh, most of these plannings do not require irrigation, so uh, we would ask the uh, decision to be made to uh, uh, strike that from one of the requirements, just because we'd be pumping water out to a plant that really does, that does not need irrigation on a daily basis. Uh, lighting has also been specified and noted on the uh, revised plans. Location and the requirements according to lighting or ordinance. Uh, one of the things that we've done with our facilities and the facades is we have a standards programs, program that allows uh, all of our facilities to have a similar book to feel uh, so they can be identified with our K Kind brand. And therefore, with our building specifications, which uh, kind of uh, coincide with the requirements of being a dark color uh, with wood, natural wood on the facade and also corrugated steel. So we'd also like to have the approval uh, to paint a darker color of that facade uh, to uh, to match our standards programs that we have with the uh, with the building. Uh, now, with items missing from the site plan, uh, we have added all the mentions as required by the right opening width of the existing drive, uh, the specifications of the entrance on to proposed drive of uh, Pine Street, which uh, Womack has stated that was a driveway and no longer a public uh, street. Uh, so that'd be something we'd have to take a look at as, as uh, as a requirement. And along with the uh, that would also entail to have the uh, the dumpster uh, covering that we have. Uh, as far as the security plans and other plans that had uh, minor uh, revisions to them, all of the issues that uh, Mr. Johnson had noted have been corrected and uh, and have been submitted, and we look forward to trying to be able to have uh, preliminary approval as soon as possible, so we could proceed with, with the uh, the task at hand to take the building under its current use and, and turn it into a uh, a somewhat more presentable building for the uh, city of Cedar Springs. I would, uh, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those and uh, expounding uh, concerns or questions that they might have.
Uh, Mr. Schaefer, this is Mike Womack. Uh, I note that there are some red arrows on your site plan that all go in one direction from the main street side through the parking lot, exiting out onto the uh, we'll say the driveway in the North Park. Is it your desire and intention to have that be one-way drive through uh, the parking lot, or what, what's your intention there?
That was the original traffic flow that we had on our presentation, and with, with the clarification of, of Pine Street being a driveway to the park, uh, that really doesn't lend itself to be a, a, a good traffic flow, so we would actually revise that to have uh, traffic enter and also exit from the Main Street Drive and not the uh, side drive on Pine Street.
So uh, the reason I ask, and I'm sure the planning commission is thinking the same thing, making a left-hand turn southwards out of the Main Street side could be a very difficult turn. Um, and you would probably benefit from customers making that left-hand turn at the light out of the North Park driveway. So planning commission members could require that any turns making uh, out on the Main Street side would be right-hand turn only and force anyone else making a left-hand turn to exit the other way. Uh, of course, we all know people do what people do, but signage might improve that. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Schaefer.
And, and that's an issue that uh, from not being from that area, uh, we are not uh, familiar with what the traffic pattern would be out of, of that location. Uh, so if that is a desire of the commission, then we would do signage and tr- try and create that to be the, the best exit for customers coming out, especially if you're making a left-hand turn.
Mr. Womack?
Yes, sir.
Is there a, is there a way we can clarify the, the true nature of this? Is this a driveway? Is it a road? Because to me, it seems like i- if it's the road, it would, and correct me if I'm wrong, if it's a road, um, then there's, would be one set of rules about how one would access it versus if it's a driveway, uh, don't you need to have permission from the owner? I'm assuming it's city-owned, but uh, how exactly would that process work?
Uh, Mr. Hall might have a better answer than I might, but I guess what I would do is I would take this matter to the city council and ask for their opinion. Um, of course, if you look at the parcel map or um, it's listed as Pine Street, let me see here, just pulling it up real quick on my map. And it does appear to still be a right-of-way, uh, which will let me to believe that it is in fact a road. Uh, but it is not sixty-six feet wide. Measure that real quick.
It's actually thirty-three foot. It's a part of, or the north half of the Pine Street.
Yep, so it's only about thirty-three feet wide. Um, so I guess we could have.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's a utility easement. We have a twelve-inch water main in there plus a sanitary sewer.
So I guess I would ask the city council to clarify their thoughts on the matter, and then treat it as the city council has decided. It's probably the smart thing to do.
It, it's really hard to make a determination one way or the other when uh, many items here seem to hinge upon the definition of that particular accessway. And if we don't have that definition, it's kind of hard to say whether or not we're following uh, the ordinances properly.
Well, so I guess I'll be.
This is Tim.
Sorry, Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Uh, I guess I would support Mr. Womack's uh, idea about making this a one-way flow through the parking lot, so vehicles exiting could come out onto uh, what I would call Pine Street and then uh, enter North Main Street via the light. I think that's a, a better flow of traffic that would require better signage and maybe narrowing down the entrance on North Main Street. The city still owns that uh, what I would call right-of-way, even though it's not sixty-six feet, so the city would still have control over allowing a driveway onto that right-of-way. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm kind of in favor of making sure that customers can get out of there safely. So anything that we can do to be smart about that traffic flow, being safe for people coming in and out, I think is a a smart way to go. So if there's a way that we can use that east pine, and this is on a Google Maps.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hall, we just lost you.
So I'm trying to use the space bar, doesn't always want to cooperate with me when I'm hitting it for temporary. I'm just saying that when I look at Google Maps, it just makes sense to me, I know that's a busy intersection. When I ride with my family to go to get ice cream, that always seems to be a lot of cars stacked up there. So anything that we can do to be smart and safe for the customers that are here and the citizens, I think we should do that.
If if that's the desire of the commission, one of the things we found with the curbside delivery. Because of the pandemic, it's been a lot easier to. Train traffic patterns and it has been in the past, especially with we would have staff out in the parking lot helping to direct. Those leaving and exiting the facility to to. Take that traffic pattern rather than going back out through the main entrance. And and one thing we found is that once once they get used to it, they seem to do the same thing repeatedly. So I I think that would be a good choice.
This is Tim Johnson again, I think one way to ensure that you have a one way traffic pattern is to stripe your. Your parking spaces so that when they enter from Main Street, they angle. Parking spaces are angled up to the building and then when they back out, they will head automatically out to the Pine Street exit.
That would be a good suggestion, yes.
Mr. Johnson, so if they're going to angle the parking, which is a which is a good idea. They might lose a parking spot or two, especially on the north side of the building. But it's also going to change to be a drive lane. So I see it's currently listed as twenty-four feet. I think the drive lane for a sixty degree angle parking spot is eighteen foot. So that's something that the applicant's going to have to look into and of course still meet the minimum parking requirements. So I haven't seen the new site plan, so I don't know if he's done it or not.
Sorry, there's space on the property to there's space on the property to make up for that parking. Just requires some more asphalt than what they show on the site plan.
Yep, now there's definitely space, of course, we probably want to require appropriate pavement markings. And maybe no entrance signs facing towards the parking lot from, you know, so people don't try to exit on the Main Street.
Correct.
So, Mr. Conley, do you want to kind of put a blanket approval of the things that are listed in the planner's report? Do you want to go through them one by one? You want to see the updated site plan? How do you think the planning commission would like to proceed?
I'm going to give the commissioners an opportunity to tell me which direction they would like to go because I don't want to monopolize this. But I personally feel kind of in the dark, I I I know that. A site plan exists out there that's been that's different than the one we're looking at. But it's kind of hard to internalize all this if I can't see it all at once. What's the opinion of the planning commission? Mr. Nixon.
So I agree with Clint, I would like to see an updated site plan. Because looking at the building to. The facade, especially in the very front that faces. Northland needs some work, there is wood up there. I would like to know, you know, what's going to be done about that. And also, of course, with the lighting plan, because you know how I am with the ADA. The Disabilities Act with the lighting and stuff.
Mr. Nixon, in regards to the facade of the building facing west. That elevation has been changed, the the current roof, which is asphalt overhang. Was to be changed to a standing seam metal roof. With the fascia above it changed out to to finish cedar wood. Then hold hold our signage on to the the building. So that whole the whole exterior of the building is has been either painted. Covered with corrugated metal or replaced with with natural wood effects. So we haven't left one area of the building untouched as far as renovation.
Mr. Conley, I would like to point out the color that's been presented in the facade plans. I mean, I like the color, but under the ordinance, it very specifically says that very bright colors. How is it put? Building color shall be harmonious and relate well with the surrounding area, shall be of a lower reflectance, subtle. Neutral or earth toned colors, high intensity colors such as black. Neon metallic or fluorescent for the facade or roof are prohibited, except as approved for building trim. So a significant portion of this building appears to be a black color. Those, I I I mean, it says prohibited. Do we want to allow applicant the opportunity to paint that as a dark gray color? How does planning commission want to deal with the color?
I saw that as dark gray, I didn't see it as black. Unfortunately, with with the architectural drawings, we're not capable of doing all of the color schemes. But yes, our standard is black, but we also do have a couple of buildings that are more of a dark gray graphite color. That is very similar to what our our standards are. So again, we we were asking for the opinion to allow us to to match our standards. So that we have continuity throughout our franchise. And and that is one of the topics of discussion that we would ask for your approval on to have a dark color. Represent on the the major portion of the building.
Well, Mr. Johnson, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't the ordinance say? High intensity colors such as black are prohibited, except as approved for building trim. And that doesn't appear to be trimmed to me, and so if it's if it says prohibited. They might need to seek a variance for that and not be able to get it at the planning commission level.
I would agree with that, it says prohibited, so that's what it means. Unless there's some disagreement as to what the real color is. You know, it can start gray or black, I guess that leaves it open to some interpretation. But if the playing commission as a group decides it's black, then that specifically. Is listed as a prohibited color, and they would have to seek a variance on that.
If we specify that to be a a graphite color gray. That would then fall within the confinement and the rules of the ordinance.
Well, I I don't want to play label it as I wish games here. I think you would have to bring in some kind of a color swatch. With a name identified and indicate that that is the color that is intended. So that later on we can reference back to it. And you know, if if the planning commission determines that your graphite color is in fact black. For the purposes of the ordinance, it is considered black.
We would be able to provide that because we do have standards that have had some of the same situations of all buildings. So we have a standby standard where it is a a gray with a definitive black trim. So there is quite a bit of difference between the two coloration. So again, a lot of times it goes by the size of the building that we're actually working with. This is one of the larger facilities that we have for retail, so it does get to be a lot of black and intensive colors. So we we do have a standby standard that we can adapt.
I think that's more likely to be approved, but we will have to see, you know, some designation, some specific designation on what exactly what color you do choose.
Yeah, we we can quickly provide those.
Any other questions or comments from the planning commission?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Hall.
On the front facade, it shows you have corrugated steel. We didn't allow Loom to do that on the side of their business downtown. That's a concern that I have with the corrugated steel on a facade, that's my only comment. And I think there's a lot of unknowns yet on the site plan for me, thank you.
So, Mr. Conley, if I could comment on that. You know, part of the reason I think that the city shies away from such intense colors is. I honestly cannot tell what this is supposed to look like because it's just black. I do notice that the the footing, the the knee high wall is a corrugated metal. But that could very appropriately be considered a trim piece. I'd like to know what the black materials are made of, what the majority of this is made out of. We heard it was a steel roof, which I think is appropriate, and some kind of cedar wood on top that's painted. But I'd like to know what these black materials are made out of. It's the existing window to remain, so that's a window, but yeah, I'd like to hear what the black materials are actually made out of.
Actually, the the predominant construction method of that building is cement block. And the east. East elevation, north elevation and south elevation are all block and those would be would be painted materials. So the only area where there was a change in materials is actually the west elevation where we do have. The knee wall heights, the corrugated metal. The middle portion of that is still the cinder block or facade brick that is actually already existing there and that would be painted. Would be reconstructed with standing seam, a silver colored accent color to match the corrugate. And and the wood above it is actually natural cedar, it is on non painted. And it is the the redwood color that you would see in in natural cedar.
Is that a, I'm just out of curiosity, is that a design element in all of your buildings or did you do that just for Cedar Springs?
I know that is a design element in all of our buildings, except for we did not have enough room for wood to put into our big rapids area. Again, with the size of the building facade, sometimes we have to make slight renovations. We love the natural wood, but if it doesn't fit, we we don't use it. However, with the Cedar Springs building and the the top fascia that faces the west elevation. Is is a natural fit for the the wood to be displayed there. And it's a great accent for our sinus as we have done with our Kamazoo location. We have a a south elevation that is all natural cedar with with.
Any other questions from the planning commission? Okay, anything else from Mr. Womack or Mr. Johnson before we move one way or the other on this?
No, other than to state that Mr. Johnson's reports are always very thorough. And if they've already developed a new site plan based on the notes here. In this report and then also the comments today. It's probably wise to table this until the next meeting, have applicants submit the new materials. Then the planning commission can review those. And of course, planning commission knows this, but we have new applicants each time. It has been the planning commission's general policy to approve of these with preliminary approval. When they get to a certain point, which is pretty good. This is not yet pretty good, it might be pretty good at the next meeting, based on what the new changes to the site plan are. So I guess that'd be my recommendation is table this, have the applicant meet the standards required in this report. And indicated by the planning commission, and we'll look at it again at the next meeting.
So planning commission, what what would you like to do? Is that a motion for me, Mr. Nixon?
I say motion, we make a motion, table this.
I'll second that motion.
Do we have any further discussion before we vote?
I I assume that we're going to get some updated site plans before next meeting, correct?
He actually did attempt to submit them yesterday, unfortunately, I didn't have time to give them to the planning commission by yesterday. So I know he's got them, they're probably going to be ninety-nine percent complete at this point. Although he may want to come up with some color swatches between now and the next meeting, but yeah, he's pretty well prepared.
This is Tim Johnson again, one of the items we discussed tonight, which I believe is a recommendation to apply to commission. Is to make that a one way traffic pattern through the parking lot and to angle the parking spaces. So that will require a new site plan to be submitted.
Noted, and and Mr. Womack. So where are we on the definition of a driveway or a? Or or does it matter? Is it a moot point? And does is this something that needs to be addressed by the city council before we go further?
So I honestly don't think it really matters that much. I'll I'll take this to the city council regardless because I think it's something that needs to be finalized. But as far as there being a entrance on to a city road or a city driveway. Really, the biggest concern the city's going to have is the width of it. Signage entering upon it. And some and some minor things that the DPW director will have to handle. So as far as the site plan is concerned, I don't see that as an issue moving forward.
If I could actually ask another question, one of the issues why we would probably not want to have angled parking. Is is we are still under the ordinance of having to do a lot of curbside deliveries. What I would like to allow us to do is continue the same parking method that we have. But we'd go through all the signage and making it. A less accessible to come back through the main entry and that but having them exit to Pine Street. Because we'll have a lot of foot traffic out there and with straight in parking, it'd be a lot safer for our employees being out there. And also to direct the parking, so we will continue to work with the flow to to exit through Pine Street. But just for the safety of our staff and people in in the parking lots, we'd like to have the traditional parking method. Which would be perpendicular to the building.
I don't see any reason that's a problem, only that they would have to have appropriate painting and signage and whatever else to make sure that that's the intent.
We can do that.
Any other questions or discussion before we move on? Okay, so the motion on the table, the motion here is to table this item of business. Until we receive more information on the site plan, all in favor signify with aye. All opposed? Motion for table carries, so we will be moving on to the next item of business. This is a new business, item ten B. This is for the White Pine Provisioning Recreational Adult Use Marijuana Retail Store and Class C Grower at forty-one sixteen seventeen mile road. I will, we can, we can follow a similar format as we did before. If Mr. Johnson would like to describe. What we're hearing today and then we can give Mr. Womack and the applicant a chance to to let us know their thoughts as well.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, I will walk you through my report. Again, this is a public hearing for a marijuana retail operation and a marijuana grower license. Each one of these requires a special use permit approval from the planning commission. And then if the special use permit is approved, the applicant must apply for a marijuana license, which is issued by the city clerk. Going through my report, I mean, the biggest item that I would point out initially is that. Ordinance requires that a marijuana establishment must. ordinance requires that a marijuana establishment uh, must not share a property line with an abutting parcel that has a single-family house on it. And in my report, uh, and as you are aware, uh, this particular lot does share a property line uh, with a property in Soul and Township where there is a single-family house. So per our ordinance, uh, the ordinance does not say that the house has to be in the city or out of the city, but the intent is that it not about a house or property with a uh, with a house on it. And in my opinion, uh, this lot does a but a lot with a house on it, and so they do not meet that particular requirement of the zoning ordinance. And unless they get a variance or come up with some other alternative, uh, they cannot be approved for the special use permit. One other item that has not been provided is that they cannot be issued a uh, license or even a special use permit until they provide a pre-qualification letter from the state of Michigan. That should be provided as well. Plan commission could decide to wait until that pre-application letter is provided or make that a condition of approval should you reach that decision. Regarding the sketch plan that they provided, they have given us a basically an image of the original site plan that was approved uh, when the building was constructed back in two thousand and one. There's not enough information on that to figure out what's going on, so that is unacceptable. And the aerial photograph with the building superimposed on it is also unacceptable because simply doesn't meet the sketch plan requirements of the ordinance. Rather than list all the items that are missing, it simply would require that they provide us with the items that are uh, listed in section forty dash forty-nine of the zoning ordinance. Number of other items that they need to provide us with regarding uh, parking. How much parking uh, is devoted to this uh, this use, how many are on site? They need to provide that. Landscaping requirements, we would like to see them show some landscaping along Seventeen Mile Road. Again, irrigation, underground irrigation is required. That's something the planning commission can decide if it's required. Same thing with the lighting plan. And they do have a dumpster at the rear of the property. Planning commission should require that they provide a dumpster that is in accordance with the new dumpster regulations that were adopted, I believe, last year. On the facade side, uh, again, there's still uh, need some to verify compliance with the ordinance section forty dash four six three regarding colors. They do show us that they're going to be painting uh, the facade and we need to know what those colors are. For sidewalks, our ordinance requires the sidewalk be installed along Seventeen Mile Road. Whereas the sidewalk exists on both sides of this parcel. Putting a sidewalk on this parcel would would help complete that travel path. Sidewalk requirement can only be waived by the city uh, council. They would have to request that at some point in time. City engineer would want to look at that if they're going to be re uh, repaving the parking lot to make sure we know where the stormwater is going. And then under application materials, I provided uh, a list of how they meet or don't meet those requirements. And they should, uh, they, for the most part, they meet it. Uh, we would simply ask them to fill in the blanks where that information is missing. And I have also provided some information on special use permit requirements. And then my summary concludes that they really don't have enough information on the site plan, uh, the pre-qualification letter. And then the fact that they don't meet the ordinance requirements and says the parcel cannot abut a lot with a single-family house. So some of those are are some major issues and I think really prevent the planning commission from proceeding uh, beyond this point tonight and we would ask the applicant to uh, to respond to these items uh, at the appropriate time. That's all I have, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you.
Mr. Womack, do you have anything to add to that or?
Yep, I'll briefly walk through some of my notes. Um, so obviously, and I think everybody understands that this property does abut a single-family residential. Uh, I do know that the applicant has been furiously working trying to rectify that issue. Uh, I think they've come up with a good game plan of how they might be able to solve that issue, but they're still working on it. At least that's what I heard yesterday. Uh, uh, let's see here. Yep, I I don't, and I I don't know why I even accepted this, that they didn't have pre-qualification already, so they need to address that. Uh, of course, noting that the pre-qual requirement is gonna go away probably here in March of this year. Uh, so that's uh, situation might solve itself. Um, I agree that the site plan was very lacking in detail. Um, yeah, we we try to make it as easy as possible for applicants to understand what's required of them. Um, and you know, there's a whole list of things that were supposed to be on that site plan that just were not. Uh, I'm happy to work with the applicant to point them in the right direction. Uh, the landscaping ordinance is updated. Uh, one of the things the planning commission probably needs to decide is whether they want to force applicant to install the parking island landscaping. The parking island landscaping is what breaks up ten parking spots in a row. So they would be forced to install that. Unfortunately, that could be very expensive. Uh, lighting, um, is indicated before, sometimes when we have a site that is already in existence, we do not require the full photometric plan. But instead, we require something that's akin to a lighting plan. However, we didn't receive anything like that. Uh, Mr. Nixon, I do look out for your interests. I do make sure that they have appropriate lighting in all their ADA spots. Uh, the dumpster enclosure that exists on property is in very poor condition. We'd want to see that fixed and updated. Uh, I also noted the sidewalk, although in my discussions with applicant, they just uh, indicated their desire to install that. Uh, if that's the case, they do have to note that on their site plan. Uh, as Mr. Johnson has indicated previously, that should probably be indented towards the parking lot for pedestrian safety. Uh, the sidewalks out there were, for some reason, installed way too close to the road, so uh, we'd want that to indent towards the parking lot. Uh, um, as Mr. Johnson indicated, they uh, do plan to fix uh, and resurface large portions of his parking lot. Uh, if they're going to do significant amounts of that, they may want to have their stormwater calks looked at by the engineer. Uh, I don't normally get the engineer involved in these types of projects because it's a existing area. Is no pounding in the parking lot right now. Uh, so we always like to save the applicant that expense if possible. And then I note that Mr. Johnson uh, asked about a traffic impact analysis. Uh, you know, that can also be costly. It might be beneficial to the planning commission for planning how this happens or not. Uh, but there's one driveway in and one driveway out. Um, there's only so many options that can be uh, put there. It sure would be nice to see that driveway maybe widened a little bit. It's a fairly narrow driveway. Um, but I don't know if I've ever noticed any significant problems there. Uh, but you know, these marijuana businesses will have a a large number of people coming and going. Uh, we may want to have them improve that driveway now instead of later. Uh, so yeah, I agree. They have some issue. Apologies. Uh, they have some issues that they have to overcome, um, but I think we should probably hear from the applicant and see if they have any comments about how we plan to address some of these issues.
I would tend to agree. So is uh, an applicant or representative of the applicant available to to speak to this?
Yes, good evening.
Um, uh, hello, I I'm not sure who I'm speaking to exactly at the moment, so you could identify yourself.
Um, I'm Justin Thornton. Um, I'm represented tonight, um, along with Jeff Halverson, Frank Puenzi, and Emily uh, Elms. Um, we are the owners of the property at four one one six seventeen Mile. Each uh, one of our members uh, lives and works in Grand Rapids and we're excited to be part of the Cedar Springs team. Um, our store will be powered by Healing Organic Gardens. Healing Organic Gardens already runs two facilities. One is in Bellevue, Michigan, and one is in Cannon Township. Both of these locations are about fifteen minutes from Cedar Springs. Uh, Cedar Springs will be our third location uh, with all the others nearby and our first storefront. Um, we can get you that pre-qualification letter. Uh, we have that ready to go, so we can take care of that issue right away. Um, regarding the building, we are planning on using the existing building with no changes to the footprint of the site. Uh, we are making some changes to the external part of it, so we will be redoing the entire parking lot. Um, we're looking at the summer of twenty twenty-one because the asphalt plans are shut down right now. Along with that, we were thinking um, that a right turn only sign would help alleviate traffic issues along with uh, widening that entrance, uh, lowering the grade and adding those sidewalks in for safety purposes. Uh, we are also looking at all necessary upgrades to irrigation, landscaping, and lighting as requested with the review completed by Main Street Planning. Um, we've reached out to our engineer already, who is currently creating the drawings. And these changes will be done in the next few days. We'll be happy to pass those plans on to you. Along with that, we are also working with our construction company to identify the proper negative indoor air pressure HVAC system to bring any smell complaints with the site. Um, the building will continue to rent the subway, uh, Little Caesars and tobacco outfitters. While the remainder of the building would be updated with our state-of-the-art cultivation center and retail shop for adult-use marijuana. The retail shop will be located at the far end of the building, furthest from the street, which should alleviate traffic near the road in Little Caesars. This will be also uh, including a designated curbside section for safe purchase without requiring business or building entry. Uh, we are aware of the zoning issue with the residential owner behind us. We have a fully executed purchase agreement to sign, uh, signs to purchase some of this land from them. This should um, treat the necessary buffer for us to legally operate our marijuana company in Cedar Springs. Our goal is to give back to the community, provide access to regulated cannabis products, and improve the use of the strip mall. Um, uh, we are open to any other suggestions as well. Uh, Emily, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to mention?
I think you covered it, Justin. Um, yeah, just to say we're really thankful for the opportunity to land in Cedar Springs. Uh, we are local, our, I, we have two little boys. They play soccer in Cedar Springs. Uh, and we take your comments very seriously and we have addressed, already began addressing everything and we plan on covering all of your concerns to a T.
Okay, uh, planning commission, any questions, comments? Mr. Nixon?
So regards to the parking lot, I noticed when I read it, it said that they planned on just putting down some asphalt and stuff. Mike, can we um, require them to tear it completely up because it is just far beyond and gone?
Well, how about we just ask the applicant to uh, tell us right now what their plans are?
We have pricing for both. Um, we are planning to do a full tear out on certain parts, especially the driveways and the areas that are eroded farther. And we're looking at uh, inch and a quarter mill and then repave if possible for some of the areas that are uh, in better shape. But we have pricing for both. And um, if the city wants the entire parking lot done, which I can see the reason for that, we're more than open to that and we'll get that taken care of.
I didn't think the act was as bad. I was meaning in front of the strip mall itself, so that I think that's where the drive portion is. That's the worst portion, I believe. I think it's just been left to rot.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll get that taken care of.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Conley, if I could?
Yes.
And this is not necessarily related to this particular business, but uh, this is the first grow operation that the board is reviewing. Uh, every other uh, business that you guys have reviewed so far has been a retail store. Um, and I would just comment, um, I have now visited multiple grow operations. Um, and I I want to dispel to a certain extent that these, uh, in my experience, do not smell. So I think there is maybe a misperception that because it's a grow operation where marijuana will be growing inside the building, uh, that the exterior of the building will smell like marijuana. That has not been my experience. Um, in fact, I'll tell you, it's strange when I've visited these grow operations. Uh, you can't smell marijuana inside the building. Um, so they do an excellent job. Um, these marijuana grow operations do an excellent job with filtering out the air. Um, and I honestly don't think you would even know what was going on there if there wasn't signage. So, uh, that being said, I guess I would just say, don't be afraid uh, of this as a grow operation. Um, and I, and of course, the planning commission's been very good and professional about this, but uh, I think we will be treating this like any other type of retail environment.
Mr. Womack?
Yes, sir.
Um, while I appreciate your anecdotal experiences, um, and and that's good information. Is there something in the um, the regulations regarding these that creates the infrastructure that requires the scenario where it will not uh, smell on the side?
Yep, so multiple different ways because of course marijuana has a bad reputation and we wanted to ensure that was very strictly within our ordinances. So, um, first of all, there are strict requirements uh, about filtration of the air in the ordinance and they have to maintain a negative air pressure within the building. Uh, meaning that all the air is being sucked into the building and none of the air is being expelled out the building unless it's been filtered. So that when you open up the door, uh, you don't get a release of odor into the atmosphere. Um, and we also have very strict provisions that if we do have smells emanating from this and the other business, uh, that we can uh, suspend or remove their license for failure to uh, call the ordinances. So that's why, in addition to just my experience, I don't expect any marijuana business in the city to smell. Now, these are very strict rules.
Thank you. Mr. Nixon?
I had a couple more things. Um,
Sure.
I noticed in their um, plans, they talked about uh, up to could be three hundred customers a day. And right in that area, that's already, we already have a lot of accidents in Seventeen Mile right there. That's a concern. And also, what about all the glass that's on the facade there of the building? Is that a safety concern?
So who would you like to, Mr. Johnson, I'm seeing you light up. I'm not sure if you were intending to speak there or is this uh, I wanted to know who you were asking, Mr. Nixon?
Sorry, I was looking at Mike.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, so this is why I address the others' thoughts regarding a traffic engineer. Um, you're correct, Seventeen Mile Road through no fault of this business, um, has become a very busy road. Um, the driveway was approved, I assume, under some very old standards. It's a fairly narrow driveway. Um, on the north side of the road, I think it's the family farm and home, they at least now have a deceleration lane. Uh, but that's not possible on this one because of a gas station to the immediate west. Um, so you heard the applicant indicate that they'd be willing and open to possibly uh, having a right turn exit only, uh, which we could enforce with a angled exit. Uh, we might also benefit from having this driveway widened, uh, which of course could be expensive due to the curbing there. Um, we'd probably have to eliminate some of these parking spots as well. One of the things I would absolutely love to see, but I don't know how possible it would be, would be to have an access easement run between this property and the gas station. You do that, and I think now you could have people exit all the way out to White Creek Avenue through access. Uh, however, there is a significant elevation change here and that would be a a kind of up and down driveway. And that's something that has to be worked out between the parties. Um, so, but I agree that that driveway, something has to occur there. Um, maybe at this point, we say, hey applicant, propose something that would be safer. And then the planning commission can review whether that's appropriate and uh, meets the planning commission's desires. Um, and then glass, I don't know. Uh, that's maybe a better question for the applicant, whether they think the glass front is a security issue. I can't imagine that there's any way to access the marijuana simply by smashing glass. And of course, they make great films now that can be put on the glass that prevent it from shattering. But let's let the applicant speak to that aspect.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. We do plan on using a film over the windows. That will be shattered proof to prevent that. And we will be, the glass areas that will be in the area for cultivation, we will be putting block behind that too. So that even if somebody does try to break in, there'll be a block wall directly behind that. If the city has any other suggestions that they would like to see incorporated into that, we are all ears and we would love to hear it.
Good.
This is Tim Johnson. If I could, if I could comment on the driveway. The widening the driveway would need a permit from the Kent County Road Commission. So they have their standards for driveway width and turn lanes and that sort of thing. But I, they do have an estimate of three hundred cars per day, which is really three hundred in and three hundred out. So that's six hundred cars per day, which is at least is more or equal to the McDonald's nearby. So I guess I'm concerned about the number of cars coming in and out of there. And the city engineer may have a traffic engineer on their staff. If they do, I'd like to get their, their input on the impact of that many cars per day coming in and out of that site.
That certainly is enough to arrange. And maybe I should put the applicant in touch with the city engineer so that they can talk with a traffic engineer.
Okay.
That would, if, if, if the traffic was truly at that level, similar to the McDonald's, that would be concerning, I would have to say personally. Knowing that, that mall from having visited in the past, it's, that seems like a whole lot of traffic going through a very narrow spot. But maybe we've misinterpreted something, I'm not sure. Is that, is that the applicant? Is that the true estimate that you believe that that may people will be coming through there?
We believe that the volume will be higher due to our location and the branding with Healing Organic Gardens. We don't know exact numbers, but some of the traffic that was going into that mall before, that was visiting other suites when Family Dollar was in there, which was a high volume tenant, and some of the tanning salon and the the staffing company, with those gone, some of that traffic will be alleviated. And we are already planning on widening this as, as much as possible. We are more than open to a right hand only turn sign and any other options available to alleviate any concerns.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the planning commission? Is this Mr. Hall?
Yes, on concerns on traffic flow there, I believe we had the same conversation at one time with Rite Aid. And we had them put that driveway into the east, which had, I guess for a better acronym, a pork chop angle where it deterred anybody from making a left-hand turn. That's a possibility.
Thank you. I'm curious myself. I don't, I don't know the exact solution that the applicant is, is pursuing when it comes to the land purchase to order to insulate themselves from the, from the residential property. I don't, I haven't seen what additional land is being added to this. So I'm curious if that additional land purchase would provide options for other accesses.
It is possible.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I'll let applicant discuss.
One plan. Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Now, Mr. Sorensen, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. There is maybe one possibility that we could have an access out that we're looking into, but it's not far enough along now that I wanted to firmly commit to that at this time. But we are taking that seriously and looking for any other options.
Thank you. I, I don't, I'm not speaking for the entire planning commission, but I know personally, I would, if you had an option that would give us a way to reduce the traffic in and out of that opening, that would be looked upon favorably from, on my, from my account.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yes, many years we've tried to get cross-access on that particular side of the road. But majority of the property owners were not receptive. So that parcel always ended up as kind of a bad entrance to the seventeen mile road. So whatever we can do to correct that would be helpful.
Thank you. Anything else in the planning commission? Or for Mr. Johnson or Mr. Womack?
Only there, I think that the planning commission should give the applicant some direction about exactly what they want done with that driveway. I think you've got a couple options here. You can order them to work with a traffic engineer to come up with a recommendation. You can allow the applicant to come back with their proposal. And the planning commission could review that proposal and approve or disapprove of it. You could have them work with the Kent County Road Commission, see what they'll approve there, which is going to be a requirement anyways. Yeah, I guess those would be the two major options. Either have the traffic engineer get involved or have the applicant propose something and you guys could review it. But I think they probably deserve to know at this point what direction the planning commission wants them to go into.
I think I would get them to do a traffic engineer, because I just got to thinking, if you put that island in the middle where they make a right-hand turn only, Little Caesars does get eighteen-wheelers that pull in there. And from driving a truck, those things, you're not going to be able to get a truck in there very easily, even with widening it, if you put that separation in there. So I think a traffic engineer and getting Kent County to look at it, I think is going to be our best bet.
I would suggest they check with the county first, just because that's the cheapest option. See what they're likely to approve and the geometrics of driveway design and how that fits in that particular location. And I would like to have maybe the Kent County then contact Mr. Womack or the city engineer, traffic engineer, see what they could work out.
Okay. So anything else in the planning commission? Do we have, I'm sorry, you're pointing at someone, I couldn't tell.
Mr. Chair, I would like to, I think the first step the applicant must do is get with the Kent County Road Commission, because they will control the, the width of that entrance. And they may require him to do a traffic study, but I think his first step is with the road commission.
Thank you. I, I agree. Okay, so it, it sounds like we, there's, there's a lot of open issues out there still on this. And that we need to get some more information before we can go any farther. Would it be the recommendation of anyone on the planning commission that we move to table this until further notice?
That'd be my recommendation.
So is that a motion for me, Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Conley, I apologize. Just, just so that we're clear and so Ms. Johnson has it correct. When you say until further notice, do you want to remove this from review or do you want to step this to the next meeting?
I, the moment I said that, I felt like I misspoke. So thank you for clarifying that. Until the, until the next meeting or it is, until it's satisfactorily, I'm not making the motion. I was just suggesting that we move it, that we wait until we have what we need.
I think the applicant is working pretty aggressively on this. Every time I've spoken with them, they, they seem to have reasonable responses about what they're doing. I'd like to see it at the next meeting. I think we'll all be surprised, pleasantly surprised at the amount of work they can put into it between now and then. So hopefully they can come back in the next meeting, answering a lot of the questions that we have. As Mr. Johnson is very reasonably laid out in his report, they've got a good roadmap to success. And I, I think it'd be appropriate to table to the next meeting.
And I assume, Mr. Womack, that you have all the relevant dates that they would need to hit the, so that they could be on next meeting's agenda?
So the next meeting is February second. Generally, we require that the planner has all the materials and he, so that he can submit a report to the, to the board seven days before that. So I can put my agenda and reports together for seven days before February second. So February second means everything should be submitted to my office by the twenty-sixth. Mr. Johnson, how long do you need to review a second draft on this?
I'd like to have it by the nineteenth or twentieth.
So it sounds like they've got about a week to get everything to Mr. Johnson and/or the city planner.
We will do that.
So I apologize, Mr. McGrath. You had started with a motion here, and it's just now kind of in limbo because we jumped in and interrupted. So would you like to restate your motion and then we can continue on?
Yes, I'll move that we table this until next month.
Wait a second.
Second.
Oh, second.
Any further discussion from the planning commission before we move, before we act on this?
I do have a really quick question about the stolen township. As it, I think I understand it that you're buying a plot of land from the residential owner so that you then have a plot in between. Correct?
Correct.
And there's nothing in the ordinance that says how far it has to be. It's just, it cannot have a adjoining property line.
Can't touch.
Correct.
Yeah, so the ordinance says you cannot share a property line between a marijuana business and a single-family residential use. So based upon the information that I've seen from the applicant, it looks like they have purchased enough property that there would be an intervening property between the marijuana business and the single-family residential use. Of course, we all know that the home's not moving, the business isn't moving. It's unfortunately one of those legalisms that has to be complied with. So I understand what they're trying to do, and I think it would satisfy the requirements of the ordinance if they're able to accomplish it.
Mr. Womack? Does that create any kind of issues depending on how they choose to incorporate that property with a four-twenty-five agreement or anything with stolen? Or is that a situation where that would, that piece of property would remain outside the city and not something we're considering?
Yeah, so that's one of the issues that they're still working on. So they have a purchase agreement, I believe, on the property itself. The issue is that the property might be landlocked. So I know the township has approved of other landlocked properties in the past. And I don't know if they're willing to approve of this landlocked property. Of course, I'm, I don't work in the township, I don't know what the rules are. Now, under city ordinances, it's theoretically possible, I'd have to dig deep into the ordinances, but it's theoretically possible to create a parcel that is landlocked so long as it has legal access. So this would be something similar to what was accomplished for a boom over the city's parking lot. What the applicant could theoretically do is create an access easement over their own parking lot that would then exit onto this landlocked parcel. That is theoretically legally possible under cities laws. So to answer your question, they could do it under the township's laws and leave it in the township. Or they could ask for approval of something similar under the city's laws, and that would come to the planning commission as well.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Hearing none, all in favor of tabling this until the next meeting, please signify by aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, motions tabled for the, thank you. Which brings us to item C, ten C, under the, I have a long agenda here, under the new business, item ten C. This is related to section forty-four oh nine district regulations on the maximum building height exceptions ordinance. I'm assuming, Mr. Womack, that this is your.
So I have been approached by a business in town that would like to erect a accessory building that would be in excess of the city's maximum height allowances. I would note that we have lots of buildings in town that don't meet or, or do exceed that requirement, including this building. So we have an ordinance on point that says that all buildings and accessory buildings shall be less than X number of feet tall. And so I, I looked around at some of the surrounding communities and there are other ways to do this. And so I think it's probably pretty reasonable in some regards to allow exceptions to the maximum height requirements. And so I drafted the ordinance that you see there. But I wasn't a hundred percent sure if this was the correct way to go about doing things. So I was going to ask Mr. Johnson for input. And the planning commission may want to ask him to review it and give his recommendations today if he's prepared or at the next meeting if not. And of course, all right, and the planning commission also has to determine whether this is something they even want for soon.
This is Tim Johnson. I, I don't have the background on this very much, but I did take a look at the zoning ordinance. And there is a clause in section forty dash four four eight that does allow for the certain, certain portions of buildings to exceed the height requirements. Talks about chimneys, cooling towers, domes, spires, church steeples, penthouses. Basically, portions of buildings that, that aren't occupied, that, that have to go along with, that are necessary for the functioning of that use. So I'm not aware of, of the need for this extra height for this industrial use. If it is, falls in the category of, that would meet the requirement of the height exceptions that might work there. I don't know. I don't know enough about it to, to comment on it, only that we do have a clause in the ordinance that allows certain uses to exceed the height requirement.
Mr. Conley, I will admit, I've been staring at this set of ordinances for five years and I've never seen this ordinance before. So I'm looking at it now. It says, subject to other provisions of law, the requirements of all zones shall be subject to the following exceptions. Walls, chimneys, cooling towers, elevator bulkheads, fire towers, gas tanks, grain elevators, silos, stacks, et cetera, et cetera. So grain elevators, silos, provided that they are located the same distance as their height from any adjoining property line. Maybe I wrote a whole ordinance and I didn't need to.
We've all been there, really. I mean, I can't remember how many ordinances I've written in that same situation.
Well, Mr. Johnson, I guess I'll commend you on your reading abilities. I don't know if I've ever in five years seen that ordinance.
Well, it's kind of a standard, it's, it's standard in most ordinances, so I knew where to look for it right away. But I don't know if it fits the current situation, but it's certainly a simpler way to approach this than, than adopting a new ordinance.
Yep, so I guess I will take a look at this ordinance and determine whether it would meet the requirements that are expected by the project. And I guess I apologize at this time, I, I guess I would ask the planning commission to table this to a date uncertain. And allow the city manager to bring it back if, if necessary, but I will work with this ordinance.
Does that work for the planning commission? Do you have any other questions before we move on?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Currently, the city Um currently, the city has a tower or a silo out there right now at the wastewater treatment plant. And this site is an industrial site, so would it need to come back to us for approval?
Um if, if the project is going to only be an accessory building, then I don't think it would. I- if this ordinance holds up.
So I guess my question is, is it appropriate to table this? Um or is it appropriate, I'm just not, want to make sure I have the correct way to handle it based upon what your intent is.
So the only reason I'm asking you to table it is because, you know, I'm going to dig a little bit deeper on that ordinance just to make sure that it, it works for the current situation. If it doesn't, I don't want to, I mean, it, it doesn't really matter whether you want to table this or not. If, if I need it in the future, I can bring it back. But probably the appropriate motion is to either uh remove it from your agenda or table it to the uncertain.
So what's your pleasure uh to, to, to adopt uh the prior planning uh chair, planning commission chairs language? Uh what's your pleasure, planning commission? Um do we, we'd like to table this or?
Motion to remove at this point.
You have a motion to remove, I'm sorry, is that what you said? I want to clarify.
From the agenda, and if it ends up coming up again, then it can be reviewed. But I don't see any reason to keep bringing it up and discussing it if it might be a moot point.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this? Right, hearing none. All, all in favor of removing this from the agenda, uh please signify with aye. All opposed? Okay, yeah, it's been removed. We're moving on to um open discussion for issues on the agenda, section eleven. Uh we have correspondence would be section A.
So I'll make this quick. Um I had to be walls and fences ordinance. Uh just so that our newer members can review it. Uh this is something that was being worked on back, I believe, in September or October. Um and I would mention that uh there will probably be some additional changes to it in the near future. But read it, try to understand it. Um if you have any questions about kind of why we're looking into changes, please email me or call me, and uh this will come back to you in the near future. And then sec- section uh two, membership ordinance. This is what has changed the planning commission, kind of how things are running for you guys, so I thought you should at least have access to it.
Okay. Um which would bring us along to uh staff comments. Uh any comments from the city manager?
Um I'll echo uh some comments that we heard earlier, and that is, you guys do put a lot of work into this kind of stuff. I appreciate that, I really truly do. This is not easy stuff. Um I know you guys, I think you were probably getting up earlier by some of the public comments. Uh we can't take that personally. Um and I just uh thank you for all the work you guys are doing.
Any comments from the city clerk? Thank you. Planning commission members, this is your opportunity to leave any additional comments you'd like. Is there any comments from planning commission? Everyone's quiet tonight. Okay, um I'd actually like to make a comment. Um we do have in front of us um some questions that we as a commission are going to have to answer regarding how we want to move forward uh with marijuana businesses. Uh I do know that um there have been some unintended consequences of what we've passed before. I do believe that we've had more applicants than we anticipated. So uh moving forward, we may have to make some decisions about what our um options are and will, and what our options can be. So be thinking about that, I would recommend, because it's the, it's not going to go away. We need to have a, a, a clear path forward on this. Personally, I have some concerns about density. Um I have a, a, a participated in the approval of this process and, and allowed um marijuana establishments to come into the city. Uh but I am not certain that it should be limitless uh from my personal view. So um but you all may have different views, so I'm going to leave that out there. And uh we'll have to address that, uh what are our ways to, to deal with that? So any other comments from planning commissioners?
Uh can I respond to that?
Certainly.
Um, am I correct in assuming that that was one of the tabled items from uh the ordinance that we were going to look at in the future, that discussion will come up again?
Uh my understanding is that it is, and that, that particular ordinance was regarding putting a hundred-foot limit on um uh around marijuana establishments, which would uh probably limit, I mean by de facto limit the number that we have. Because there's only a certain amount of real estate in Cedar Springs. I'm not sure if that's the entire purpose, because we didn't have a chance to discuss it, but um that's a consideration.
Will that be the appropriate time to discuss what you're bringing up?
Oh absolutely. I'm not intending to try to have a discussion at the moment, I'm just intend, I'm just recommending to the planning commission that they um consult with themselves as to what their opinion is on this, because I believe it's coming in the future.
I guess I was just seeing, are we going to make this a separate agenda item or is it already on our plate for the future? That's really what I was asking, but I get your point.
Thank you. Okay, um the city council representative, do we have a report from uh Mr. Hall?
Yes, thank you. Um I echo your concerns and comments on the future of uh the marijuana businesses here in town. When we first endeavored this ordinance, the big question was how many? Uh we didn't know. Uh we thought maybe two or three at the time, but then we decided, well, we'll see what happens. Well, now maybe it's time to throttle back some of these. Uh how we do that, um that's up to the planning commissioners. And that's where Mr. Conley wants you to think through this stuff on what you think, so. And I would like to thank the members of the planning commission for stepping in rerunning for another year. And we have a new member coming on uh council meeting Tuesday evening. Um you know, and one of my pet peeves on some of this stuff here on this, it's incomplete reports. I've talked to Mr. Womack many times that uh we get so many of these um agenda packets and the proposals are incomplete and we table them and send them back. I would like to see a more thorough packet come in before we even see it, but that's my opinion. I thank everyone for being here this evening, all your inputs and your comments, and thank you one and all. That's it.
Any uh the, the, I'm sorry, the planning consultant, is the report from the planning consultant tonight?
Nope, I'm just looking forward to a short ride home.
Oh, good. That sounds perfect. In fact, I think all of us should have a short ride home, although I have a very short one at the moment. So um with that, uh the meeting is adjourned.